We call this February eighteenth Hoover City Council meeting to order and ask to adjourn for approval.
Mr. Green?
Here.
Mr. Lydon?
Here.
Dr. Middlebrecht?
Here.
Mr. Murphy?
Here.
Mr. Posey?
Here.
Mr. Shaw?
Here.
Mr. Smith?
Here.
If everyone please stand for the invocation and then Mr. Posey has to make his pledge.
Let us pray. Lord, we are so grateful for the gift of this day. Help us to appreciate every day as an opportunity to start fresh and to grow in our faith. We ask your blessings upon all present here tonight and your wisdom and guidance upon this mayor and council in their decisions. And in your name we pray, amen. I'd like to invite the Boy Scouts down. Mr. Brooke, you will come down. And Chuck Perkett, if you were here to come as our veteran, if you would be pleased with it.
Should a veteran, yes, show up, we'll take him on. The chair is open for motion on minutes.
Move for approval of the minutes without breathing?
Second.
Motion's second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
For the vote today, the audience have it. Next, in the reports section, we have a proclamation for Arbor Day, Mr. Mayor. Would you like to get the bagel and the gummies, refer to Edgins, come down. Sherry Nelson, our owner, Sherry Nelson. We have a proclamation.
Whereas in eighteen seventy-two, Mr. Jay Sterling Morton championed America's first Arbor Day celebration in Nebraska City, Nebraska, where more than one million trees were planted. And whereas in eighteen eighty-seven, Alabama Governor Thomas C. signed the first state's first Arbor Day proclamation. Whereas in nineteen seventy-five, the Alabama State Legislature adopted an act designated for last full week in February as Alabama's Arbor Week. Whereas it was the purpose of those and other Arbor Day events throughout our nation's history to encourage the planting of urban and forest trees, to encourage sound tree conservation and replacement practices where deforestation occurs, to encourage the protection of forests and trees from destructive pests, wildfire, senseless vandalism, and cultural practices that degrade forests, sustainability, health, and beauty. And whereas through the cooperation of all residents, businesses, and the governments of this city, beneficial effects of healthy urban and forest trees, proper tree conservation practices, and protection of trees from their natural and unnatural enemies, Hoover can pass on the enduring and vital heritage of this urban and forest resource to succeeding generations. And whereas in appreciation for the exemplary leadership and dedication displayed by Hoover Beautification Board Member Michael Pals Richnack in organizing and administering Hoover's Arbor Day activities from nineteen ninety-nine to two thousand thirteen, all future Hoover Arbor Day celebrations shall be conducted in a manner that will honor Mike's memory and his undeniable passion for trees. Now therefore, I, Frank DiPericato, Mayor of the City of Hoover, do hereby proclaim Saturday, March second, two thousand nineteen, as Arbor Day in Hoover, Alabama. I urge everyone to do, able to do so, to observe this day through the planting of one or more trees and/or through participation in one or more programs that the sponsors of Arbor Day pay for.
Arbor Day celebrated on March second in a couple of weeks. And one of the highlights of the, well, there are a couple of highlights. We have an essay contest by elementary school children, fourth grade, and you'll hear them read their, the winners, read their essays. And each, we're giving, we have tree giveaways, a variety of native trees and shrubs, and one who comes can have one to plant in your yard for Hoover residents. So come on down.
Next, Mr. Mayor, we have a beautification presentation.
On behalf of the Hoover Beautification Board, we would like to present the Hoover County City Council and Mayor with a scrapbook of our antiques for twenty sixteen and twenty eighteen. Thank you.
And next in the reports section, we have some recognition.
Thank you to our beautification board members today. Thank you so much for our city. Never thank them. Well, you know, on past Thanksgiving, we had a tragic situation happen. We had some good Samaritans stepped down timely and manner, and we'd like to take an opportunity to recognize three young ladies in particular, Aisha Robinson, y'all would come down, Antonia Padwa, and Ayana Heinz. Thank you all for coming. We appreciate that. Of course, I'm sure everyone's familiar with what happened Thanksgiving evening. We had a, an event there that gunshots rang out and sent our mall into absolute pandemonium, fear that was felt by everyone in that mall. That night was overwhelming, and people were unfortunately running for their lives. And one lady in particular, elderly lady, probably about my age, she fell and was severely injured. And these three young ladies, everyone else was doing, was trying to get away from the gunfire, but they saw this woman down and in need of help, and they are actually all in the Gardendale High School Sports Medicine program, so they knew what to do. They have been training on how to tend to injured football players, athletes in general, particularly football players who they've had neck injuries or some type of fracture. And so they knew what to do, and immediately they let their trainee kick in, and they stopped their car, and went to that lady and rendered aid. We are so grateful that they had the skill to do it, but we are more grateful that they had the courage to do that. And so I am proud to give each one of these ladies, as a result of their outstanding performance that night, paroism, I would like to present each of you, key to our city.
Ladies, if you don't know this, eight thousand people watching. I'm sure that young lady, your assistant, appreciates it even more. Unless anybody else has anything for the reports section, we'll get into our action items. Start with Resolution fifty-nine thirty-nine nineteen, Mr. Mayor.
This resolution amends the budget for the fiscal year ending September thirty of two thousand nineteen, provide for the items set forth on the attached exhibit A. Mr. President, move for approval of Resolution fifty-nine thirty-nine nineteen?
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any comments or questions, Dr. Lopez, if you have anything you'd like to say?
I don't think you guys have any questions.
Probably find some.
Can you go through the items?
The thirty-five thousand for the clean services is the money that was identified before the agreement. So, has that started yet?
The plan is to start March first. I think a couple of employees be starting a little bit before then, but that is correct. This is for the, yes.
And some part-time help, engineering and revenue, I guess we'll bring them back to the prior table of health until the new people can be up to standard.
That is correct.
Is any of this funding coming from Capital Projects or is it being found in other places?
Basically, the funding is coming from the Capital Projects Fund. Seventy-eight thousand of it is general fund, but we're reducing the transfer. That was basically to the Capital Projects Fund that funded in the balance for additional items for Capital Projects.
How much is that unfunded?
The Capital Projects Fund? Just about three point, just under three point five million dollars. That includes the one point one million transfer that we're anticipating as we budget.
Anything else for Dr. Lopez? Not with the motion, anything from the audience? Not with the motion in a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
For the vote today, the audience have it. Next is Resolution fifty-nine forty, that is nineteen, Mr. Porter.
Invitation's to bid for Bluff Park Pavilion, bid number eighteen dash zero one three, since one hundred and sixty-one vendors listed on the City of Hoover vendor list. Bids were opened on Wednesday, December twelfth, two thousand eighteen. After review, all bids are rejected. Mr. President, move for approval of Resolution fifty-nine forty nineteen?
Second.
Motion's in a second. Mr. Powell, why do you need to reject?
Yes, sir. We proceeded through our normal bid process after working with architects, architects, designers, and, proceeded through our normal bid process, had five companies that were authorized to bid and approved to bid after a career approval process, had three bids that were submitted, but all three of those bids were significantly over our funding that was allocated for this project. So our staff is now reassessing what our options are and trying to determine what action to take on here. What was the budget of amount for the project? If I recall, it was two hundred thousand in the budget. I'm not sure if we're going to change this since this fiscal year began, but two hundred thousand is my recommendation.
Very good. Any questions from Mr. Powell?
Please, Mr. President. I want to know if it's free. As far as the project goes, with the rejection bids, how is this going to affect the timeline? And how would that affect the art show? It just came out of our meeting last once and I asked you questions about that.
Yes, sir, Mr. Posey. We'll have a contingency for the art show to be able to function as they have the last couple of years, even with the limited capacity of the community center. This does not take the pavilion project off the list, as Mr. Powell explained, it just came back aye. We're probably going to have to come back and phase this into the pavilion as phase one with existing funding, and then other onsite improvements for access as phase two. We'll do all that around the schedule of the art show.
Any other questions from the council?
Just one, a couple rather. It seemed like you ran into this before, either construction totals were significantly larger or no one showed up to bid. I guess what are we doing to address that? Because I think in the workforce, a lot of projects going on right now, so some folks are not even bidding on these projects because they are swamped with work. As we're not going to be able to get away from around and being twenty and thirty percent higher at this point because everyone's swamped with work, and they really don't have to do it because the evening's good now. Have we, did we reach out to and pre-bid and ensure that people are coming to? I know we put it out, it is up to them, but at some point, we may have to do a double back around to ensure that we beg them to come, if you will. How was that working?
Yes, sir. If you recall, we had another bid recently, it was a similar situation, that we ended up rejecting because it was significantly over budget. And I think I described to you that we were going to have to be more creative in soliciting participation in our bid processes. And that is one reason why we are embarking upon a journey to go through our vendor list, update it, reach out to a lot of companies that we have not seen come to the table before, and actively solicit bids and participation from those companies. And you'll hear more about that in the coming weeks and months, but that's a part of our, one of our plans of action in hopefully reaching out to a number of other companies that can participate in our bid processes.
And the last thing I'll say, I know we may put a dollar amount out there for capital projects, let's say ten million dollars, and think we can get X number of projects out, but the way the economy is going, with so much work out there, we're going to pay forty percent more than possibly some jobs because folks are not bidding on it, so we need to either be creative about it, or we're going to have less and less jobs and have a lot of rejection. So, thank you so much.
Anything else from Mr. Powell or the council? Anything from the audience? Just to make sure everybody understands, a yes vote is approved rejection qualified. So, we have a motion in a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
For the vote today, the audience have it. Next, we have Resolution fifty-nine forty-one nineteen.
This resolution authorizes the Birmingham Art Works Department to install fire hydrants in locations listed in the resolution. Move for approval of Resolution fifty-nine forty-one nineteen?
Second.
Motion's in a second. Chief, how many items you put in there?
Four, sir.
Four?
Say you're interested in one of these.
Any questions from the chief? The audience? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
For the vote today, the audience have it. You are here, congratulations. Next item is ABC application, special events retail for Jim Co. LLC, doing businesses, people raised, Saint Patrick's Day celebration, to be held in the parking lot of fifty-five nineteen Grove Boulevard, Suite one oh nine, on March sixteenth, seventeenth. See my buddy out there. Good fried shrimp, if you ever have a chance to get by.
President, move for approval of the application?
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any comments or questions from the council? How big a crowd did y'all have last year?
Very large, about one hundred people.
Eighteen hundred. Now you can spend a hundred and fifty dollars. That's right. She's my buddy. Our sons went to high school to get her to play ball, but they didn't know. Any comments or questions from the audience? Seeing and hearing none? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
For the vote today, the audience have it. Next, we have a public hearing to consider following requests from John Rasmussen, Gonzales Street Associates, regarding property located at twenty-three eleven John Hollins Parkway. There are two issues here. One is to requesting amend the zoning conditions for the site to allow for, one, a parapet wall to extend twenty-four feet; two, a blader tower to extend to a height of twenty-seven feet; and three, a flat roof at eighteen feet to accommodate roof mounted HVAC and other equipment. Item B is conditional use approval for a pet street resort. This request includes a revised site plan for a facility offering various services to pets, including grooming, nutrition, boarding, and other specialized services. Mr. Fevers. I know the last time, we didn't give you fair opportunity because of other issues that evening, so if you'd like to make a presentation this evening.
Thank you. Mr. President, Councilman Charlie Fevers, please put your own half the hour. We have, you know, a lot of slides, things you all have seen, much of it already. We're happy to go over it in much detail, go back over things if you wish, but I will focus on the changes that have been made since you saw it last week.
Perhaps the changes would be more appropriate because I know the council, things are very weird with previous requests were.
And so, I can do this, turn it back to you, apologies.
Would you like a microphone, sir?
I'll tell you what, I think I can swing around. Hello? All right. Is that on? Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay. This shows the site plan changes. See, the building has been moved forty feet closer to Highway one fifty, John Hollins. This is possible because, as you will notice in the site plan, all of the outside activity previously proposed has been deleted. That includes the play area that was out front, and the dog run areas that were to the side of the building to the top, and you can put it to the, yeah, thank you. That was the original plan. All of that is kind of dotted there. That was outside play area, has been totally deleted, and then the building moved forward. We have a landscape plan. That, this is the revised landscape plan, and Rob Greger, the landscape architect, is here to answer your questions, give you more detail, but just show you what it is. We have a double, moving the building forward, allowing planning of additional landscaping along that rear area. And so instead of a single line of magnolias back there, there are double line, they're staggered, you know, to create a solid buffer. At the top, you will see those magnolias were in the land plan, they came out as a result of the discussions we had with neighbors. Jim Patco's property, Pet Swigs agreed to plant those, actually on his property, but inside the fence line, since the fence kind of degrades from the line, and they're going to sprinkle it as well. The light green area below those four trees is a flat area that has titties in it, so it can't be planted. One of the changes we've made is that below that, you see some more magnolias. A wall, retaining wall will be built in that area, which raises the level of that area to substantially the same level as Mr. Patco's yard, and then additional landscaping has been planted there, magnolias. Landscaping all the way around has been, is a result of being able to relocate the building. We have a section that will show you a difference as well. Brief section at the bottom, it shows you the building being much further away, and I can read that, but it went, I think the closest, the closest is about eight feet to the property line from the back of the building, whereas the foreline was some thirty feet, substantially moved forward. One thing that this does not show is the difference in the level area that will be left under the new plan, because buildings have been moved forward, they don't have to start making the cut until substantially further out from the back property line, so it'll be less disturbance, natural grade under the new plan, and that really doesn't properly reflect it, but that will happen. You see a fence there on both plans, that's an existing fence, not shown in the plan, but including in some additional provisions that I think I said to each of you, and I will go over again in a moment. Pet Swigs has agreed to put an additional fence just inside the existing fence along that rear property line, it wouldn't fill six foot tall, to add additional buffering. Also, the, do we have the section on the buffering of the, you see the previous section for the walls, they were metal siding and kind of normal insulation. The right, you see the new proposal, it's brick, that was achieved during the prior hearings, but what was not achieved was additional soundproofing installed, and as this indicates, the STC rating under the old wall was thirty-five, the new STC rating is, it's on there, I can't remember. Fifty-six is our call. And my understanding of that is that you take the decimal readings of sound inside that wall, and then you subtract the STC rating for that wall, it reduces those decimals that you would hear just outside that wall accordingly. And so, you took, I hesitated, I should have written this down, but to do the math in my head, but you can see it reduces it. If you take seventy minus fifty-six, somebody did the math, that's less than twenty. And twenty is a whisper, so it's an effective soundproofing item that's been added to the property. As we go through a process like this, you know, you hope that results in a development being better.
They're staggered, you know, to create a solid buffer. At the top, you will see those magnolias were in the land plan. They came out as a result of the discussions we had with neighbors. Jim Patco's property, Pet Sweet's agreed to plant those actually on his property, but inside the fence line, since the fence kind of degrades from the line, they're going to sprinkle it as well. The light green area below those four trees is a flat area that has titties in it, so it can't be planted. One of the changes we've made is that below that, you see some more magnolias. A wall, retaining wall will be built in that area, which raises the level of that area to substantially the same level as Mr. Patco's yard. And then additional landscaping has been planted there, magnolias. Landscaping all the way around has been, it resulted in being able to relocate the building. We have, we have a section that will show you a difference as well. Brief section at the bottom. What, it shows, you know, the building being much further away. And I can read that, but it went, I think the closest, the closest is about eight feet to the property line from the back of the building. Whereas the foreing was some thirty feet. It's definitely moved forward. One thing that this does not show is the difference in the level area that will be left under the new plan. Because buildings have been moved forward, they don't have to start making the cut until substantially further out from the back property line. So it'll be less disturbance of natural grade under the new plan. That really doesn't properly reflect it, but that will happen. You see a fence there on both plans. That's an existing fence, not shown on the plan, but including in some additional provisions that I, that I think I sent to each of you and I will go over again in a moment. Pet Sweet's agreed to put an additional fence just inside the existing fence along that rear property line, wooden fence six foot tall, to add additional buffering. Also, the, there, do we have the section on the buffering of the? You see the previous section for the walls? They were metal siding and kind of normal insulation. The right, you see, the new proposal. It's brick, that was achieved during the prior hearings. But what was not achieved was additional soundproofing installed. And as this indicates, the STC rating under the old wall was thirty-five. The new STC rating is, it's on there, I can't read it. Fifty-six is our call. And my understanding of that is that you take the decimal readings of sound inside that wall and then you subtract the STC rating for that wall. It reduces those decimals that you would hear just outside that wall accordingly. And so you took, I hesitated, I should have written this down, but to do the math in my head, but you can see it reduces it. If you take seventy minus fifty-six, somebody did the math, that's less than twenty. And twenty is a whisper. So it's an effective soundproofing. Item's been added to the property. As we go through a process like this, you know, you hope that results in development being better. And we think even in the prior process, it became better for a lot of reasons. You know, that went to brick and it added more landscaping. Did a lot of things that were limited. But the one thing we didn't do in the prior process was deal with the concern that I know this council had. I expressed to Pet Sweet's that with dogs outside, you just couldn't get comfortable with it, even with ambient noise, the distance, the landscaping, the drop in elevation, all those things that the neighbors wouldn't be, have their quiet and their home negative in that. I passed it on to them, basically. I said, we just, they just couldn't get comfortable. They came back and said, well, let's just get rid of all that outside. Bring everything outdoors. And I went back to them with one other thing. I said, I think you need to do a little more, I think you need to keep up, you know, the soundproofing in the building. I told them it needed to be in the range of fifty to fifty-five STCs. They, they did it at fifty-six. And so that's, that's really the substantial change that we come back to you with. It's a math confirmed for now. I got to get these adjusted. Couldn't read it. I sent around to, well, let me back up. We had a meeting on January thirtieth, right here. Invite all the residents on Pine Rock to attend. We have several attend on. On, and we just showed this to them. Said, what are your comments, what are your questions? They had a number of things. And I sent around a list of conditions that I hope you all have. And if you'd like, I can read through them so that they'll be in the record. So think about them, I don't want to draw this out longer than the morning. You don't need to do that, but I will unless you tell me. No, the walls and dumpster were concerned, you know, what's it going to be? And they're going to be in the same exterior, same building.
Mr. President, we can just put that document into, put that into the record, right?
Yes, we can.
Okay.
Whether or not the council feels proof that the public have the same information.
I'm doing about two minutes, Mike.
Is there anybody else here to speak in this public hearing on this project? Okay?
But I can let John do it.
All right then.
Um, just reserve quick, dumpster pickup times were concerned. Seven AM to eight PM, limitations there. There's an existing concrete drainage pipe in the back of Foreman property. Go right to the boundary line. And Mr. Foreman was here and asked if our folks would connect to it. He said they would, and so we agreed to do that. Six foot tall wooden fence we talked about. Outside construction already limited by the current zoning conditions, but our folks confirmed that it would be limited between seven in the morning until nine in the evening, Monday through Friday, and eight in the morning until five in the evening, Saturday through Sunday. Pet Sweet's building will be open for delivery and pickup of pets between six-thirty AM and eight PM. Pets remain inside during twenty-four hours, but that's the business hours that are open. Be limited to that. Outside lights on the rear of the building, the lights in the rearmost island parking lot will go out by ten PM each evening, except for safety lighting that might be right attached to the building, which again is very low and very well buffed. There's one item that, I didn't think about it till I was sitting here going through the images that we would show you, and in my mind, I saw the relocation of dumpster. But we didn't do, it didn't on the plan. And that was something that one of the residents at the meeting on the third had asked us about. I sent these around, everybody on the eight, nobody said anything about it, but I remembered it, and we want to have that as one of the conditions. That the, can we show the site plan? Shows where the dumpster is? Right there. Some of the neighbors in there said, you know, really, how about relocating? And our folks said, yeah. We talked to Mac about it and he said, yeah, it's not in the front, wouldn't be in the front yard. It could be relocated. Our folks have agreed to relocate that dumpster building as well.
Further away from the hall?
Further away, yes. And then finally, our folks had agreed, after we'd gone through the other process, to enter into a covenant that would run to the neighbors, would be recorded, in which would strictly property against the outside pet activity. Couldn't be amended without approval of every one of the lot owners on that property. The document I sent to you is substantially the same as the current advice today because I discovered that the legal scriptures of the properties along, in the neighborhood, are in two different plats. Not only include one of the plats describing their properties, so we got the other plat looked at and included that as well. So every one of the lots that are on Pine Rock will have the right to enforce that covenant and can be changed without, without their consent. Ms. Scholes asked me today about blasting. We talked about that at the meeting. And John Rasmussen with Gonzales City Engineers here can talk about blasting and answer any questions y'all might have about that. Our understanding is that the city has a very stiff blasting ordinance. It produces shock levels of about fifty percent of what you see most other places. Many times, parts bring back surveys. So we think that it's covered about as well as it can be covered. If blasting is necessary for this development, it would be necessary for any development. And one of the positive aspects about this one is with moving that building forward, which we don't see, very little parking required for this. So you don't have to, you know, level the site for a lot of parking. Building's been moved forward for this, which gets any blasting that might occur is going to be further away than would otherwise. So we believe the city has, has the folks covered a real question of regard. But again, John can answer any particular questions that you might have about blasting. Again, there's a whole lot more to this development than we discussed tonight. And I know you've heard it before, and we're happy to answer any questions you might have about any other aspect, John.
Anyone from the council have any questions for Mr. Beavers?
I just have a few, sir. Is there, I can't really see on that plan view, is there a deceleration lane?
Sorry?
Is there a deceleration lane coming off one fifty?
No, not, not this road.
Not this road, no sir.
Will there be a deceleration lane?
We're going through the process with DOT right now.
Come on, John, come on up here.
Come down, so right in home, city, on YouTube. Under the first appearance. Signing off the grass later.
My name is John Rasmussen of Gonzales Street, one seventy-six Parkway Lake Drive. So, so we have submitted and we've received the central approval of the DOT for the access drive. We are under the number of trips that's required for a right turn lane, which is twenty-five, just due to the minimum amount of parking we have in this facility. Obviously, if it was a retail facility or some sort of fast food, quick service, we would definitely have a decelerated lane. But in this case, we're not expecting to.
Is that something that's a, could be considered? Only because that, that area is going to be heavily traveled with, without general trucks. I mean, this is a lot going on right here.
Sure.
So I know based upon the parking, they may not need it, but coming off a hill, there's a lot going on right there. I don't know what's going to happen. Would you ever scan the side long term or all sides? Is this something that can be considered?
Oh, absolutely, absolutely.
Okay. What about the, that thing, terminal lane from the median? What is there currently right now to the median?
Currently, it's a five lane section, so it's got a two-way left.
So it's got a two-way left?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Uh, you mentioned about lighting, okay, it stops at a certain time, right? Is that correct?
Yes.
What, what stops at a certain time? What type of, parking lighting?
Let's see, let me just get to it now, exactly. Outside lights, no seven in the conditions. Along the rear of Pet Sweet's building, can the lights in the rearmost island in the parking lot shall go out by ten PM each evening, except for safety lighting?
So just a comment too, and I don't know what the community thinks about all that. Just anytime we got dark lights, there's only park places and it can be a challenge. So I, you know, just, this is a precaution. The lights are definitely good, but at least everything, you got to see what's going on.
We do, we did provide that, we didn't provide that the lighting would go out in that parking lot other than in that rear island in order to keep some safety lighting. And we also, you know, provided, except for safety lighting attached to the rear of the building.
Okay, that's right. In my last couple points, the soundproofing, is that typical all sides?
No, sir. It's extra.
No, no, is it typical for all of the sides, not?
Oh, yes, sir.
Not just the back? And it rolls up always in parapet wall, the parapet on tops?
It's my understanding that it would go up to the level of roof. The parapet wall, of course, would be above.
Yeah, so it doesn't, I saw it shown as the parapet.
Yeah, I think that his lights goes up on a hill.
It tells you, okay.
Yes.
Thank you. Is that a ride-in, ride-out?
Oh, that's Mr. Rasmussen.
This, this full access. Mr. Mead, I have one question. Concerning blasting, if blasting does occur, some of the neighbors are concerned. Outside damage you're not too concerned about, but just stuff that falls inside from, you from blasting, what's, what's covered from that? If someone were to make a claim, how does, how does that work?
A pre-blast survey will be conducted. So there's, there is a set of guidelines and standards that have to be performed. Distances and proximities to adjacent structures and that nature have to be taken into consideration for blasting occur. The good thing about this site, Mr. Beavers may hit on this a little bit, is that any blasting is most likely going to be limited to the area between, well, on the highway side of the site. Just because of the old fill is situated kind of like in the middle of the site. So since we scooted the building forward, that back part is not going to be in a cut zone like it used to be. So we, we don't, we do expect probably some blasting, but it's going to be very minimal and it's going to be on the opposite side, right?
And, and so if that occurs and a neighbor does have a claim, whatever, whatever may be, how, how would they go about making that?
In Alabama, there's absolute liability on blasting. So if pictures on the wall or, you know, if you have a really bad situation, that's, that's covered. All the damages are covered. And it's been a little while since I've looked at your blasting ordinance, but I, I know it's, insurance required to be insured, it's required to be covered, required that there are pre-blast surveys. So, you know, know what the condition of the properties around there are before the blasting, so it can be easily proven any damage. And I know Chris Scholes told me she had a problem with some blasting that may have been with UAB Center before. So it's obviously an issue and it needs to be dealt with, but it can be dealt with with any development. They, you know, you've got first-class engineers here representing this company and you've got a really good ordinance.
So how, how would a resident make a claim? Would they come to the city to make a claim, would they go to?
Mr. President, Dr. Milbrook, it's permitted and regulated by the Fire Marshal's Office. So they're given claim information by the firm, the blasting company that does the pre-blast survey that Mr. Beavers has mentioned. It's told, if you have any damage or suspicion of damage, contact them. They have to report it. The Fire Marshal regulates that heavily and also sends inspectors to check the signs and graphs that replace the adjacent structures to make sure they're within those.
Thank you.
Mayor's very, you know, he's been retired for a minute. He, he used to be over blasting as the Fire Marshal. Chief Bentley, do you want to say anything about seismic graphs and what fire requirement requires when it comes to blasting?
As Adam said, Fire Marshal's office regulates it very heavily. Fire Marshal boards on the top of this, and blasting works in the city all the time. Any issues, he goes out and he checks it. And I'm going to say there's not going to be an issue, but we definitely follow up. We have a complaint that could happen.
Thank you.
Unravel bound law, again, it's absolute liability. You can't say, well, we did our best and we weren't neighbors in it, it just happens. No, it's absolutely liability, it's caused by blasting, it makes it sure.
Any other questions for Mr. Beavers? If not, ma'am, come down.
Hello, my name's Christian, seven one three two, Pine Rock Lane. I've never seen one of these meetings except for one. I was at the meeting on January the thirtieth, and I want to thank Mr. Beavers and at Sweet Smitha for coming to that meeting. Wanted personally to thank Mr. Shaw for being there. He helped us a lot when we had questions. We went over a lot of things for the community, for our street. And I want to thank them for doing that. I believe at this time that we are in agreement with what they have proposed. So I just wanted to say that. And I want to thank everybody who answered my emails or phone calls or whatever, it helped a lot to have somebody to support us, to answer our questions.
Assist them work?
It did, and I thank you.
Anything else in this public hearing, what's, what we are? Yes, sir, come on down.
Good evening. My name is Bill Singleton. I live at one-two-five Pine Rock Lane, Hoover, Alabama. And actually, the property, my backyard abuts the property. And I brought up at the other meeting a question. And since then, I had an independent conversation with someone else, so I thought I would bring it up again. I was talking to someone, and I mentioned this at the meeting also, about when blasting occurs or when you're uprooting the wooded area in terms of pests, mice and snakes, kind of relocating. And in my conversation with someone else on a different construction project, they raised the same concerns because that happened to them. And I just wanted for the record, for you all to address that in particular.
Same thing, would you have that issue, no matter what was built there?
Well, I'm not certain. So I'm just asking, what would be the situation in that case? And how is that handled if it's handled at all?
We understand the question. We're not sure what you'd do about that. If that were to occur, I think it would occur no matter what you do there. I think the fact that we're moving this thing further away ought to help. But that, it's not something we have a really very good direct answer for, other than this is a, this is a development that gets further away, falls less cut, less disturbance of the natural grade that would have to be done for most any other development. And anything that goes here is going to have to survey.
Snakes are going to act around those trees, like.
Yeah, yeah. Hopefully, they go a little away, but you know, I wish we had, I wish we had some way to answer that to you, but I just, I just don't.
I think it may be a little formative in nature. I can understand it, but once again, it's like asking about people's hands and other things.
Do you have a cat?
No.
Might be a good time to have an egg.
Suppose if I could just ask Chief Bentley, how much blasting, how to phrase this, how much blasting has occurred in the last twelve, eighteen months? How many applications do we have? There's been a lot, is that mainly out in the Black Ridge area and some of that? How often is it, is it common to have a claim filed? How often is it, is it common to have a claim filed? Process pretty good for it?
We had a couple of, we had several complaints this year because of the company that was blasting, not mapped the area. So we had three that was, lost severe damaged vehicles and stuff out, parking lot under the hill. But that was a, a blasting state, they did not map the area, so it was really hit there by the fire marshal's office, and we had the other problem.
So you're comfortable that the process we have does reconcile this?
We're very comfortable with the process. Do is extremely versed in, and something that he's involved in, they, so we're very comfortable with the process because we know it's, it's a process that we have to have in order for development.
Thank you. Chief, you get a call every little while, snakes.
We do.
Still call Charlie Gerald from here?
We, we handle it, and we probably have control to assist us, and we can handle this. We do have mechanisms in place to help you, you know, if you do have a snake, we'd be happy to come out and do whatever we can to take care of it.
I'll let my wife know that also.
And our folks, John's told them, we put on the plans, that is required, they know it's required.
Very good. Anyone else who cares to speak in this public hearing? We have two motions, Mr. Foreman, can they be handled with one vote?
Yes, sir, that's, that's, we're the chair. We require motion to approve.
All right, sir, do you have any language you would care to read before we take any motions?
No, sir, other than what's printed on the agenda for the two approvals.
I've already read word for word, so chairs open for motion, or both vote together?
See if I can get this right, this is gonna be D N C. style here. Mr. President, I'm moved for approval of the rezoning request and the conditional use with the following additions to the conditional use. The conditions as submitted by the applicant, and the additional condition that to move the dumpster as allowed by a law ordinance to the front of the property. Real quick, do we need anything for the, for the documents, that's all separate, right?
Sir.
Got a motion and a second. Any comments, questions from the council?
Mr. President, should I just make one comment? I don't know how this vote's gonna go, I think I do. And before we vote, I want to tell Mr. Beavers, Mr. Rasmussen, Mr. Gregory, if there was a textbook case in how you handle conditional use and rezoning, this is the, I've been watching these for six years, and you guys just wrote the book on how to handle these. Patiently working with this council, patiently working with the city, working with the residents, I can't tell you how much I admire the way you have this. So thank you very much for the way you have it.
Start giving seminars.
Mr. President, I would add to those comments, and also that the involvement of the community has been tremendous help in ironing this out. Just the, the process isn't always pretty, sometimes it's convoluted, but if you look at the proposal as originally proposed, and what we have now, I think we have something that's both pro-business and good for the surrounding community, when you look at some of the trees and some things that don't be there, those are things that would not be there, and some other, other proposals. I did, just out of curiosity, look around, some, some people had asked about whether or not having dogs inside is a common thing, it's actually fairly common. I found very similar facilities in, in Las Vegas, where it's too hot to have dogs outside a lot, and downtown New York, where you don't have a lot of space. So, so it is fairly common, it's just interesting that it would be applied in this, in this way. But again, I think everybody's done a great job, even like I said, even though I'm looking pretty all the time, coming together on what I think is a better proposal.
Anything else from the council? Anything else from the audience? Seeing, hearing, none, I'm prepared to say aye.
Aye.
Disposing aye, the ayes have it.
We're fine, it's down, we're working with this mountain opportunity from that. System, process really work with it, I think we've got a great staff, and great work.
Very good, thank you. Next item is public hearing, the city request from Mr. Cole Williams, Goodwood Mills and Kaywood Inc., to amend the site plan with the committee's approval, ran it in February eighteen for the crossings that we were at, senior living. And then memory care center, relocated twenty-one seventy-one Parkway Lake Drive, on the corner of Montgomery Highway and Parkway Lake Drive. Property is owned by S M K. Investments, currently is owned, E P I. Land, Light and Fish.
My name's Cole Williams, Goodwood Mills and Kaywood, twenty-seven oh one, first half of December. What you see tonight is a real minor change that was made over the last year, the case was brought about this time last year. We made a minor change to the site plan, you'll see the, the lab, where we started. And we also made a slight change with the building elevation. Next slide, it kind of shows, one more. We shortened the memory carries, a one-story name, we shortened it, kind of pushed it underneath the taller elevation, the consolidated space. So the two things that constituted the refresh coming back, the ass where the issue began, the approval was change in elevation, materials all stayed the same, the program stayed the same. And then that building change then gave us an opportunity to really make the site a little better by Richard Baker and Mark.
Any questions? Mr. Shaw?
This is the one, I've heard before of all the, unfortunately, I can't go by the, I'm seeing myself, so.
Any questions from the council?
Much as I hate to miss you.
It's almost housekeeping, I think. Any comments from the audience in this public hearing? Public hearing is over, and.
President, I'm moved to approve the conditional use.
Sir.
Got a motion, second, I've already explained. The itself, any comments, questions from the council, the audience? Seeing, hearing, none, I'm prepared to say aye.
Aye.
Disposing aye, the ayes have it. Next, we're going to set public hearings for Monday, March eighteenth. Councilor James Clark, consider the following requests coming forward, positive recommendation from the February eleventh, January twenty. There's one case, Mr. Keith Hamby, Crystal Entertainment LLC, requesting conditional use approval to hold in the outdoor spring carnival at the Galleria on March twenty-second through March thirtieth. This year, the property is owned by Hoover Mall Limited, Slade Gallery Adventure, and its own D C. plant commercial. So, I have a few bills.
Yes, sir, have any questions, they got to answer today all those deals, so thank you for all those who answered those questions, and I would recommend they be paid as presented.
Sir.
Got a motion, second, I'm prepared to say aye.
Aye.
Disposing aye, the ayes have it. Comments or questions from the council?
Mr. President, I have one question. How many people are here for the annexation of these bones?
Okay.
Quite a bit. Think that'll fit in the conference room or do we need to stay out here? Let's take it. Okay, he'll be here right after this.
Mayor, you have anything tonight? Very good. Don't have anything else?